Mayor, Brooks.
Yeah.
O'Gala.
Yes.
Summers, Aaron Singer, Moran.
Here.
Rice, Harris, Trenier, Benifield, Britt, Gould, Nolotello.
Yeah.
Gallech.
Here.
Brizalone.
Yeah.
Winfrey.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Sally Berry.
Here.
Ballinger.
Here.
Markham.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Tumminello.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Krelitis.
Here.
And Eustace.
Here.
Kevin Horn.
Okay. Mr. Brooks, like Lewis in the flag?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Okay. We have no business to do with all normal business that we're involved today in. And we move this, we have a presentation by Louis University Airport. Now, Chris Lawson is director, I think that's your title, director and operator. So he's going to come down and give us a presentation. But you know, before we do that, yeah, we have, airport development kind of stops and then it goes up, stops and then starts up again, improvements are made. So many of you in this chamber who have not been here when we were participating with Louis Airport in helping with the, with the expansion of runways and the improvement of runways and so forth. And Louis is an airport that is very often through projects doesn't qualify for 90% funding from the FAA. The deck can come up with 10%. And I want the chairman to know that we've been a regular participant and partner of Louis Airport. So this is not new for us to be involved with the airport. It is, it is a substantial transportation asset within our county, continues to grow. And of course, if it was a controlled airport, it would grow considerably. And it's a considerable economic asset to our county. So I'd also like to point out that we have funded and helped provide 10%, 10% funding for the airport on those projects throughout the years. I'm pointing that out because they have, we have a partner with Louis in the sense of helping them go forward development with the airport. So having said that, just give you a little background on our past involvement with Louis. I thought all of us who went to Louis, I remember it was this little dinky, kinky little airport. And I thought only the, you know, I thought only the helicopter guys and airplane mechanic people were the ones who used it, but it's a pretty substantial airport now. So Chris, are you going to come down or who should have come down?
Okay.
Dave, you're going to come down?
You can call someone if you don't mind.
No, no. Come on down. You have the floor, you can, you'd like to go on? Hopefully I set it up nicely for you.
Yeah, you did, thank you. And the speaker's right, I know a lot of you weren't here in the times that the county really helped us out a lot funding the airport for various projects that we have. So thank you for that and we look forward to a continued partnership moving forward. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what, what the airport is and then Chris has got a presentation. The reason we're here today really is, you can see a proposed control tower on that photograph. We're trying to get a control tower to help us out at the airport. We have two intersecting runways and we need a traffic cop sort of in the middle to help us out. And having a control tower there will help not only in terms of safety of the people flying in and out of the airport, it will also really set us up for a much larger corporate presence. As the speaker kind of alluded to, I think the airport is really one of the greatest economic development assets that we have here in the county. We really like to sharpen that knife a little bit and make it better. There are a number of corporate planes who can't fly into the airport because of insurance regulations with no tower. So we're trying to get a tower there, we're trying to raise about $6 million. Looks like the number that we're at right now. And the, the airport is owned by the Joliet Regional Port District. It's named Louis Airport because the Joliet Regional Port District bought it from Louis University years ago. And as part of the sale, it was forever to be named Louis University Airport. So that's why the name. But I am the chairman of the board of the Joliet Regional Port District. And the Joliet Regional Port District owns and operates the airport, the Louis Airport. And the Port District is a unit of government. So like the county or another unit of government that exists created by statute some years ago. And we have a board that we all serve without compensation except for pizza at lunchtime. Our board members are appointed by the county executive, the mayor of Joliet, the mayor of Romeoville, who is our host community, and also the governor of the state. So that's where our board members come from. We have, as the unit of government kind of, pardon my pun, flown under the radar for many of years because we don't impose any property taxes, although there is the ability to do that. We've been able to manage the airport through the years with operating revenues and also help from some other units of government such as the county and others. So, so we're here today just to ask Chris, who's our director of operations, to tell you a little bit about the airport and to also welcome anybody that wants to come out for a tour to please get ahold of Chris, get ahold of me either way, and we'll make sure that we get you out there for a tour of the airport. Because it's a pretty nice facility and I think if you haven't been out there, you'd be surprised at how much it's grown since the days when Speaker Eustace and I went to school there. So, Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I'll try to keep this short, I promised Nick I would. I grew up, Red Russ Street from the Louis Airport. I grew up College View on Airport Road, my father was an aviation instructor. I got the bug, one of my co-students at Romeoville High School was a pilot. I'm going to go flying, Chris, sure. Got the bug, got the pilot's license and ended up working at the Park District Airport. And then went up to Rockford for years. And my father was the airport manager of this airport and passed away while I was at Rockford. And I knew George Micus and I knew Frank Turk and Jim O'Connell and the old crew, which are all now gone. But I had to call him up and say, what are you guys going to do? And we started talking and I was, I made the decision I want to come home. And my, my boss at Rockford sat me down about two days later after I told him. And he said, Chris, are you nuts? There's no tax levy down there, you can't do anything, you're not going to make this thing work. Fred, my mom lives there, you know, I gotta go back, we're going to make it work somehow, somewhere. And Micus in the Port District built up about a million dollars in revenue bonds off the waterway. Doing connectivity through financing, they get a percentage. Built up a war chest of about $700,000. And he said, Chris, that's yours, somehow you gotta build this place on $750,000. And so we didn't buy any equipment, we still use federal surplus equipment out there. And every dime that we spend out there with that money and with the county's contribution, with the city of Joliet, back in the Riverboat Gaming Days, has been leveraged with the federal excise tax. It's off of fuel, the DICAT tax. We do get 90%, 95% funding and includes land acquisition. So we've taken the place from 172 acres and now we're over 1,000 acres. Today we have a runway that's longer than Midway Airport. We land PC9s out there, we land four-engine military jets. The problem is, the county grew with it and because of your success, it created a success for us. We're getting so many people coming in and out of there that we have, it's like flies on an outpost. And we don't have a control tower. And I, that sounds horrible and I got, and you got the precedent here, so you don't want to say that we are unsafe. I do not want to say that by any means. But there are times where unsafe conditions present themselves and people have to do go-arounds. We had two just the other day. So we had to hire a consultant, who this is his presentation, I'm going to blow through it real quick, I won't waste a lot of time on it. But we hired a professional to say, how do we get a control tower out of the FAA at Rockford? We just had, I didn't build it, I didn't know a whole lot about the mechanics of putting one together. And it is specific. The last control tower was built something like 15, 20 years ago at Waukegan in the state of Illinois. And it's amazing when you get into the statistics how Louis Airport, which is another problem, and I don't want to come off saying that Louis University, please don't, I'm not saying anything bad about the university, but the name of the airport, when we go knocking on the door to a congressman or a senator saying, hey, I'm trying to get some federal money for the airport in Will County. I'm at the Louis University Airport, they think it's a private airport. And we signed the agreement with Louis University that we would call it when we bought it back in 1989. And it just, you have to get over that hump. So there's like a lot of little humps in our way all the time. But to make a long story short, we're doing great and we're here because of the success of this county. And it's a front door persona. I am the front door of the community via air traffic. It's just like coming down I-80 and you get that first commission, I don't care where you are on I-80, but you're going through a county, what do you think about that town when you're going by? And you look at the aesthetics of it, the airport's the same way. We do everything we can to make the grass on the infield look good. We do everything we can to keep the place clean, bathrooms obviously, just like rest areas. You do everything you can to make it look good. But if the passenger in the back of the airplane is scared because the pilot just did a go-around, we've got a problem. And those people are coming in, making land decisions, they're going to rent a warehouse, they're going to build a warehouse, they're going to buy a piece of land. So keeping this place safe is a responsibility of the FAA, of the Port District, and you know, it falls down to anybody where we can get help. So if I may, I'll go through a contract tower program, what we're working on. The Port District has been accepted to a federal program that says the FAA will give us controllers. They're going to staff the tower, we've got them to agree to that. The problem we have is that we can't levy a tax and want to issue traditional low-interest bonds and build the tower. However, AIP funds, those tax funds I was telling you about, we are eligible for the AIP funds to build the tower, but they have a $2 million cap. Back in the day when they wrote this language, $2 million was a lot of money. Now, to build a basic tower, we're not trying to build a Tide in the Hall, it's not going to have Dave's picture on the side of it. It's just a traditional concrete panel that you see putting up, it's like a warehouse with a cab on top. Costs $6 million. The Congress and Senate keep passing continuing resolutions. In the next bill that they pass, they're going to remove that $2 million restriction. And that's really important to us because then we can ask for $6 million managing federal funds. And that's what we're trying to do. So that's our problem right now. I'd just like to go through, why do we need it? We are underneath controlled airspace for O'Hare. The minute you take off in an airplane, we are limited at 3,600 feet unless you're talking to the big head. If you're just going out, heading south, they keep you away from the O'Hare traffic big time. If you did, if you drew a circle around Louis Airport, there are over 660 based aircraft around my airport and we're all staying underneath 3,600 square feet. And if it's a nice day, it just looks like a TV gun box, you're going, you know, people are shooting at you from all over the place. Technology has expanded, increased, all the guys in the airplanes now, they're making it a mandate. You will have a fish finder in your screen, it'll show you where the airplane's at. Okay? And so technology has helped that, but you're still supposed to be looking outside the window and watching the airplane. So it does get crazy in the Chicago area. We have a diverse kind of aircraft too. I told you we had the big jets, the corporation coming in from all over. We've got small jets, we've got people that are enthusiasts, it's our boat. We have people who have home builds, that built their airplane in a basement. And the wife was very happy when they finally get them out of the basement, bring them out to the airport. So we have J3s to G650s, we have diverse amount of pilot proficiencies. Anywhere from ATPs, teachers that are teaching Louis students. Louis University has 30 operating aircraft. Their program has no cap on it now. They're, they changed it this year where they're putting a third person in the airplane. There's a person sitting in back, they will stop halfway and trade passengers so they can teach these kids and spit them off. The airlines are gobbling up these people. They can't get enough air traffic controllers. So it's amazing what's going on out there. This is just kind of a diagram to give you an example of where LOT, that's Louis's ORD, if you were on your ticket when you go through O'Hare. We're LOT, Gary Midway, just give you a rough idea of where we're at. The purpose of the controller is to prevent mid-air collisions, obviously. We have two intersecting runways, literally that intersect in the middle. And if the winds are light, it happens occasionally where one will take off on one, one will take off the other. We have no traffic light out in the middle, we have no cop out there. And in the event they both talk at the same time on the radio, they can't hear that. It has a potential of being a problem. So that's the job of the air traffic controller, it'll manage it out there. The minute something happens, we have an emergency, the controller will call 911 or a direct hotline to the Lockport Township Fire Commission across the street with two, air traffic, fire, rescue. Great attribute to the airport. An airport our size shouldn't have the great equipment that Lockport Township has. But we're very lucky to have that. As I said, I'm going to go through this kind of quick, so if anybody wants to yell. There's been 100 airports that have joined this federal contract power program and we're doing it the same way they have. We're going through the FAA litmus test and trying to get it approved by them. We found, we're looking at sites, I'll show you that second here on the airport where it'll physically be. There is a regional, you've heard a lot of me, you've heard about privatization in the FAA. This is actually the first test of privatization. This is federal contract power program. And we will be supplied controllers through Midwest regional air traffic controllers. And it won't be directly from the FAA, they staff it, they're paid to staff our airport. So it's kind of interesting how that's developing in privatization, but it's bound to be quite effective and it's about 60% of the cost of a traditional FAA tower. This is the staff that gets everybody. If you look at the counts of the Louis, the Louis Airport, if you will, these are federal contract tower airports in the state of Illinois. We're at the bottom there, obviously, we rent, we have 105,000 operations and these are the tower counts of other airports in the state of Illinois. This has been the main reason why we can't understand why the FAA isn't throwing money at us to build this tower. It makes no sense.
What operation is a takeoff or a landing?
These are takeoffs and landings. One takeoff is an operation and a landing is an operation. But it's all consistent, so they do it the same way at all the airports. We have passed the litmus test, there's a benefit cost ratio to get the federal funds and the contract, the controllers. We came up with a 1.23, so that's why they listed us as a candidate. One of the main things too that was a primary indicator is the value of life has gone up. It's kind of morbid even to talk about it, but the cost of a person now is worth $9.6 million. But that's actually taken into the FAA cost benefit analysis. We must do, build this tower, all the FAA safety criteria is, it can't have the visibility lines. I can't put up a wind vanguard with a tower cap, but it has to be a tower where the controllers could see everything in the, on the airfield. You can't have any blind spots on the approach ends of the runways and can't have any blind spots around hangar areas and that. We picked out three sites, I'll show you here in two seconds. The estimated cost, as we've been mentioning, is about $6 million and there's that $2 million cap that they have on it. The height is obviously the primary cost driver, the higher you go was, no different than any other building, the higher you go, the more it's going to cost you. When we ran the same thing with the tower. Can't be put in the direct center of the airport because you have approach minimums and things like that. You have to watch out where you put it on the airport. And since we've done this original study that we believe that if they haven't changed the numbers, the updated VC since we've done it is actually 1.81. So it's, this reflects the cost or the amount of activity that is out of the airport, it continues to get worse. So that's why we're here, I mean, we're hitting the panic button. We want to get the word out and we need everybody's help, especially when they're talking to a congressman, a senator. What's the story, why haven't you funded that thing yet? And it's a separate funding, it's not coming out of public health, it's not coming out of roads and bridges, it's coming out of airport funds. Why aren't they coming to the Louis Airport in Will County? That's the question we ask and we got to interfere. These are the three sites on the airport. Site three and site five have sewer, water, telephone, T1 lines. That was the site that we really wanted to push for. And site six is on the north side of the airport that has basically no improvements. When we ran into site three and site five, because of the height between five and the sixth, we obstructed the Doppler radar ball signal. So now we got a problem with the National Weather Service. So if we drop it so that we don't obstruct the Doppler radar, we have to cut down a building. And those are the issues that we're working on right now. We're trying to keep the height down, but you know, you've got to be able to see everything and keep the cost down. So it's a, it's a puzzle, really what we're putting together. We should have this all completed, hopefully by the end of the year. This is what we were looking at, site five and site three, site six was on the north side. This is the terminal building, it came in the front entrance today. And this was supposed to work, I don't know how, but we did a drone study with a camera on it and the camera went up and the drone turned around. And if I did that, I will absolutely turn this computer off, so I'm not going to do that to you. But that's a quick tip with the camera system. Basically, here's where we're at, still looking for the $6 million, it's going to be in that ballpark. We, you know, we might be able to get it down to five, but it just depends on where we put it and how much it's going to cost. And that's at least what we're up to. I hope that was not too fast, not too slow, but if you have any questions, we're always here. Thank you.
Chris?
You mentioned that the money is not out of the hole, there's a special fund for these money. Now, doesn't it just take an act of the House of Representatives, Senate to pass to get, obtain these money? What is the biggest hindrance?
We used to use place names or earmark. Okay. And now, because everybody was getting so good at that, they're not doing that any longer. So we can't get over that hump. Okay? So we're having, we're having to play this by the numbers. And a real frustrating point to this whole thing is, a control tower in the FAA's mind ranks as high as repaving a runway. To me, it should be, it's a safety item, it should be a lot higher than that. I don't understand their logic, but when you get a priority number ranked to your project and it's as high as a paving project, something's wrong. So I am criticizing them in some way. Okay. All right, thank you.
Chris, I just wanted one more question. The, currently you have four RNAV approaches, right? And you have two localizer, right?
Yes, we, uh...
You do not have any ILS approach?
We do not have a GLICIL, that's correct. We have a localizer DME. Basically, when the clouds are real low and it's really bad, if you've ever seen a gun sight, the, we, we put in a localizer system that just gives the pilot a center needle and if he keeps that needle straight, it brings them right into our runway from about 100 miles out and he can't see the ground. So it's real efficient. They have them at O'Hare today, at every end of the runway out there. So that's the common thread. And in those particular improvements that we put out there, the Port District was only offered an 80-20 grant, the FAA wouldn't participate on, from the state of Illinois, in fact, when they used to spend their gas tax for that. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for that great explanation. I think it's so important to know that, it's very rare, as far as I know, that an airport doesn't have a tax levy. I mean, a lot of the, well, small regional, I don't know, DuPage does a central Illinois regional airport, they have, most of them do have. So I think it's really good that you guys are able to work your airport out efficiently and not to put a line on a property check, so I think that's something that's...
My next-door neighbors would kill me.
Right, right. I don't, I know. My dad lived in DuPage County in the state of Illinois, property check for the DuPage Airport.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's really good. I think it's very important that we really look at this strongly to help them because I'm in favor of, we have an existing airport, it's underutilized for various reasons. In your case, you don't have a tower. And that we would be able to bring in these corporate jets that could land there and help develop and grow businesses and hopefully more than just warehouses. We're looking into, not just warehouses, bringing in, you know, good tech jobs and things like that. So I think that's very good and it makes sense to take our airports that are in existence today and make them as efficient and safe as possible before looking at building, say, a new airport that may not be needed because of those other ones that could be running at a better, a better pace and more efficient if we took the steps necessary to make the improvements that are required. So, thank you.
Chris, maybe you can touch on your revenue stream, but I think you kind of touched on it briefly, you get to your hangar allowance and that kind of stuff. So why don't you, maybe just touch on what your current revenue stream are?
Right now, the way we adjust our budget, the hangar rents pay for the revenue bonds that we've issued and the fuel sales pay for labor, directly related with the airfield. And we need to, with our revenue bond covenants, we need to have a 25% coverage over break-even and we manage to do that every year.
So basically, you operate on primarily operational funds or capital, fuel sales?
Fuel sales and hangar rent, yes, sir.
Okay. So I want everyone to stand out, is how they fund the airport. There isn't necessarily a separate funding for capital, I guess is what I wanted to get to. That's where it becomes tough. They can operate the airport under revenues, but it's, right now the revenues aren't sufficient enough for capital.
Yeah, the only thing we could do is issue more revenue bonds. We have gotten into leasing property surrounding the runways that is not designated for airport activity. And that's a great way, that's really given us a shot.
That's really where I think some of your potential revenue development.
Oh, absolutely.
1,000 acres of site.
Oh, and the village of Romeoville's been hand-in-hand working with us to help us with that. It helps them, it helps us.
Yeah, the other thing, maybe I, you, you mentioned you have a cross runway. Can you explain why it's so important and why that gives the airport additional capacity?
Wind.
Additional capacity. So in cloud weather, certain wind conditions, they can come in from different directions.
Correct. If you ever go to YouTube and you look at the airliners that are about to crash, you know, it's always fun for everybody, right? You like watching those big airliners, they're having a hard time with the wind. So that's why a crosswind runway always helps.
So it's something you're going to make, as an improvement of a system, that gives you additional capacity?
Absolutely.
I want to get to, Mr. Moran here, I want to get to you last, okay? I want to, I want to talk about some of your revenue. Suzanne, can I?
You know, and we talked about this in great lengths as well, on going down to CTC and with FAA and having these conversations, but are they, it seems that you've all been progressive, a little bit faster these days. Is there some more say of like, if the dollars come in, it's going to be a for-sure thing? Not a for-sure thing, but...
I've got a $6 million problem and we are, our plight is falling on deaf ears at the FAA and we're working very hard with the Senate, Congress to go in there and bang on the desk.
So if you get it solved, then you're in. That's all you're waiting for.
They see us coming and they just roll their eyes, okay, here it comes. But we have to, this is not a point.
As most of you know, we are pretty active in NACO and we have had, had, as NACOs, kind of take this issue off. Not only convert and order towers, but to also keep the pilot program for remote towers going. And continue as a, as a, yeah, they, they basically pick, you know, they're demonstration projects almost. It's a ways away, but we try to get that line. One of the people who really has worked at it pretty diligently is Don Moran. Now, Don is on the Transportation Committee of NACO, but he's also the chairman of the Aviation Subcommittee. And Don is the pre-acting, that's pretty aware of that. So Don, I'm going to give you the floor here for what makes...
Thank you, Jim, Vice Chairman on the airport.
Vice Chairman. I promoted you. So as a my, I appreciate you as chairman, next time.
We have strongly advocated through NACO and some of the resolutions that we've proposed in the last two years have been incorporated into the FAA reauthorization and continuing resolutions. And I'm thankful that Dave and Chris, you guys came out today to give us this presentation and you know that I'll do whatever I can do to support this, to get it to move forward. Worked with, with Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hart to move our legislative agenda towards doing whatever we can do in Congress to get the FAA off the dime. You know, we've had meetings with the FAA, with WADA, and the consensus there is, you know, they're not spending any money on controlled towers, even if it's just maintenance, let alone new construction. Like you said, the last control tower that was built was... Like you said, the last control tower that was built was, you know, a couple of decades ago. It's, it's something that's necessary, we need it here in the county. It would help us bring more corporate activities into that airport. Something that we'll never be able to get, a big corporate headquarters to come to this area without having a business airport that they can fly their people in and out of. And so anything that we can do to help, I'm very happy that you guys finally made the decision, you know, which way you wanted to go with the brick-and-mortar tower. You know, I sat in on that meeting a couple of weeks ago that you guys had with the FAA, and it, it amazes me the amount of information and stuff that goes into picking just the site for a tower. It's incredible, the things that they have to look at, what they have to examine, and the problems that they have to resolve in order to do it. And if there's, whatever we can do to help, whether it's funding through the county, if we can figure some way out to do that, if it's working through NACO to leverage the power of NACO to get the FAA to do something or get Congress to move something, we're willing to help, or I'm willing to help. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Is there any other business report today? Is there any other comments today? Other comments? Okay, I'm going to, there's no need for my executive session. All the candidates for adjournments.
So, all?
Two seconds, all favorites.
Aye.
All the motions for adjournments.